Okay. Um. I'm calling the main order at seven o'clock on January third. Uh, let's do roll call. Allison Miller, Angela Dorson, Gina Serrano.
All right, Kenny Rundersinger, Drew Fulmer.
Colin.
Colin Porce.
Yeah.
Thank you, Colin.
Um, so the agenda says the first item of business even before the minutes is to appoint a chair.
That's correct, and you don't need to move seats tonight. You guys can stay where you're at.
Yeah.
Anybody can be appointed chair.
I would like to nominate Drew to be our next chair. Isaac Scher, third.
Uh, no, I think Kenny and I discussed earlier, I will have some work trips that will prohibit me from leading meetings. So given those conditions, Kenny will step up, but other than that, I think that I have support of the group, so I will stand behind it.
Okay.
That's great. So tonight it's optional. Would you like Allison to finish chairing tonight? Or would you prefer to take the lead? Either way.
I think Allison has relinquished the gavel and I will take over.
Sounds great.
Cool.
Like right now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So next on the agenda, Drew.
All right, so next on the agenda will be review of the previous month's meetings. Does anyone have any comments or concerns from the notes from last month's meeting?
I did not.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I moved to approve the planning commission minutes from November eighth, two thousand twenty-three, but that's not right. December.
December sixth.
December sixth.
December sixth, two thousand thirty. Nice. So then?
All right. So moved. Uh, then the next on the agenda for tonight, I will pick up the discussion on the cottage housing, hoping to close out this topic for discussion. Um, so Will, if I'll head back to you to review where we left off.
Thank you so much, and I will need to take a minute to pull up the examples that Allison so kindly put together for the group, but not right away. We can look at the packet, page two is the outline of the new cottage housing. Uh, since you reviewed this last time, I modified the order of the draft regulations, so the cottage housing shows first and then potential amendments to city code appear after that. Um, and like I said, we will have some examples, but let's talk about the examples after we walk through this. I believe the changes I made reflect all the comments we discussed at our last meeting. And if that is the case, we may be able to move this item to hearing as early as, um, March. I want to aim for March because I'd like to do a hearing then with the new code amendments. If for whatever reason, the planning commission would like me to move the hearing to February, we can do that as well. So it'll be at your, uh, direction. You can give me direction on what you prefer, but first let's walk through it and see what kind of comments we have and where we're at. So the unit size, we didn't change that. Uh, cottage housing will be twelve hundred square feet or less. The height. We talked about a maximum height of twenty feet as measured in accordance with our existing height regulation calculation. And then for parking, and if I'm going too fast, let me know. For parking, we talked about having one parking space and that parking space being within two hundred feet of the closest exterior wall of the cottage house. Um, we noted that parking could be located, uh, as an attached parking space or detached in a garage or carport or even just paved parking, like an open parking lot. And again, we're citing already existing adopted standards generically in chap- in Title fourteen. Parking is encouraged, uh, for cottage housing to be along the side or rear property lines. Detached parking needs to have contiguous five-foot path for for access to each unit or the unit it serves, excuse me.
I ask a quick question of number three there. Um. It, if this is, like, when you say detached parking, do you mean on a different lot? Because if it's on the same lot and it has not been subdivided, then you can't do an easement over one lot to itself?
Yeah, that's kind of a legal question, and I think I've heard different answers from different legal coun- councils. So, um, I can run that through, through the legal. Um. But the idea is that parking doesn't have to be on the same lot, just within two hundred feet.
Okay. So maybe if it was like parking on a different parcel or something like detached just makes it sound like if the parking is elsewhere in the lot, then you are supposed to have an easement, which is doesn't make sense if it's on the same lot. So maybe just changing the detached language. Outside, outside parking, yeah.
Well, the other thing is, remember the state law is changing, so we, so anybody can sell these kind of unit lot developments, they can sell the unit itself. We're gonna have to allow them to do that. So maybe I'll work on the wording. I'll work on the wording. I, I hear what you're saying. I think we, we have some interesting things conflicting there.
Just one typo on C one, um, meeting the standards, not the standards?
Oh, right. I see that. Thank you.
Just won't get picked up since it's a little word.
Right.
Well, we're on the topic of, um, typos, et cetera. Um, if I found a few of them, would the best thing to do be annotate a PDF and send that to you?
Yep, yep, or just mark them up and hand it, um, to Amy there and whatever is easiest.
Okay.
And I really appreciate that eagle eye because I don't have it, obviously. Um, but it's really an important part of good clean code writing. So Andy Lane used to provide those. It was really helpful. So I'm never embarrassed. I make plenty of little mistakes and don't, don't be shy about pointing them out. Well, never embarrassed might be an overstatement. Um, density, um, we talked about, um, the number of cottages. And here we're basically just saying no density. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time getting that to pull up and be visible. No defined density other than the what can fit within the building envelope and the required parking spaces and open space. So if you can meet all the standards and provide four units, great. If you can meet all the standards and provide forty units, okay, um, we'll work with that. I don't think we have any lots that big in our community. Um, and then we have an example of a standard six thousand square foot lot. And what that might like, might look like three seven hundred square foot cottages or four cottages, five hundred and twenty-five square feet, very small. Another reason, um, and those are just footprint sizes, another reason to maybe allow for that second story when we talked about the twenty-foot height. Because if you're at seven hundred square feet, just to get to that twelve hundred max, you're gonna have to have a second story. And different sized units will serve a different portion of the population as we discussed last meeting. Again, we will have some layout examples and we'll talk about those in just a minute. Uh, setbacks for cottage housing. We talked about a front yard that's reduced from twenty-five to twenty. The exception for the eight-foot front porch would still be applicable for cottage housing. And if you would like me to clarify that, I can add that to the code here. Then the side yard is five feet. We already have allowance for accessory structures to be within three feet. Again, that's something that would apply to cottage housing. And then for rear yard, we bumped that down. It's eight feet, which is the same setback for lots that are off an alley. If the, if, if the rear yard adjoins an alley, they have an eight-foot setback. If it doesn't, it's a fifteen-foot setback. So we took the lesser standard of our existing code to help encourage cottage housing and went with the eight-foot. Uh, clustering of these cottage houses, we talked about a minimum of three cottage homes are to be clustered around an open space courtyard. And then we talked, yes.
Sorry, just to go back to either the front yard, twenty foot, so do we need to put in a thing about the porch? Is that kind of the standard?
Because right now it's twenty-five feet with a eight-foot porch. So you can encroach closer than twenty feet. Do we still want to allow eight feet of porch but it's twenty feet?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, do we need to put it in code that you can do that right there?
I, I think it's always helpful if, if that's, yeah, if it's something you want to encourage, it would be nice to have it here.
Well, I definitely want to, want to encourage it, but too, if it's in there, might provide some more.
Can we just reference the other code right there?
Mm-hmm. We sure can.
This may seem like I have a silly question, um, but how do we define front and back? Is that with respect to the streets, the alleys, the driveway or the homes themselves? But like, it's in relation to the street and where it is accessed from? So the street from which you access the house, it's a front setback. The rear is opposite that.
And, and so these just apply to, um, the perimeters of the thing and not with respect to each other except for the side yard? Requirements?
That's, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then corner lots are kind of a unique beast in that point of entrance or access is, has some options there. Great questions and discussions. Thanks. I can add some clarifications for the next draft. Clustering a minimum of three, we talked about that. Were there any comments or questions on that?
Um, does driveway count as open space? And I, I, I appreciate that the options are somewhat limited for the smaller lots. Um, and I'm, I, I did read through the email with the clarification about reviewing these, these sample concepts. Um, it, it looks like there isn't really much of a, of a clustering this. It's, it's hard for me to tell the difference between like this, this, this just seems like a subdivided lot more so than something that encourages community. I mean, it looks like people would just kind of drive past each other. So I guess my question is, does the, does any driveway or easement stuff, um, count as the shared space?
Uh, no.
No, okay.
I will, um, pull the definition of open space and add it to definitions. I don't think, well, we have, um, a proposed new definition for courtyard and it means an area used for open space, but we also have a definition for open space, uh, which may or may not be maintained as green space, but your driveway would not be considered the courtyard or the open space.
So I think the clustering is kind of and I think that just a, a minimum, a minimum of three cottages. And then the open space is more about the arrangement. So I feel like the clustering section feels a little bit pointless, that like unnecessary because the density section says you can have as few or as many fit based on the underlying standards and other requirements. And then the open space says each cottage shall about a courtyard or open space and then gives the definition of what that should look like. So do we need the clustering section at all?
I agree, it was redundant.
Well, it's not even about a redundant. I think one of the things you're getting at is the clustering statement makes it sound like they all leave you around one space. And if you, in the examples that Allison sent us where you might have three houses in a row, there's open space around all of them, but they're all not like clustered around one meeting place. Am I making sense there?
Yeah, it's like sentimental about it.
Right.
The, the word corridor makes me nervous.
Well, I just think the, the clustering section is redundant when we get down to the open space. So I think we should just skip the clustering section and just talk about the open space section and only have that
Right.
arrangement of spaces be discussed in one of the sections.
Yeah, I agree. So just give her an F.
Or just, or just strike the word shall be clustered or clustered, so it says, but I don't think
No, it's completely, no. At Charles' point, it's completely addressed. Sessions, but I think it's right.
Yeah, we, we partially talked about this a little bit last month, and I think the adding the examples was supposed to help clarify the intent, so removing F might be just fine. Especially when we add the examples.
And, and, uh, to that point, um, just a friendly suggestion to help clarify the, um, the max out, like the final bullet on the examples was thirty-five percent lot coverage is twenty-one hundred square feet, max out at three, seven hundred square foot cottages. Um, does that mean the footprint and not the, okay?
Not the, there you go. Which I kind of, when we talk about the open space, I kind of want to go back to D and talk about that a little bit.
Well, I think we're there. Uh, well, we have storage. Was there any question or comment on storage?
I wasn't, uh, here for this discussion, but keeping kind of a big picture in Oliver code, making sure that we're not adding anything that can drive up the cost of housing. This feels like something that specifically would require someone to add additional cost to unit when there could be other solutions potentially within the units themselves. This just feels like added forced piece that would add cost, in my opinion. It would really be up to the discretion of the developer and or the homeowners, should they want to have storage.
I agree.
Is there, um, more general agreement to that? Should I remove it?
Either way, so I'm okay with it. I mean, different.
Okay. Uh, Colin, do you have a preference on the storage? You can be the tiebreaker.
Uh, I agree that we can take it out.
Okay. Uh, Polly raised her hand. Um, I leave it to the chair. Drew, how would you like to handle public comment and input? Can we maybe go through the last item and then?
Yeah, let's finish going through it and then we will do all the comments.
Okay, let's do that then. Uh, that gets us to the open space. And we talked about requiring a two hundred square feet. And we talked about, um, we talked about this, maybe not defining it as a minimum of four hundred square feet or a four hundred square foot square. Hundred by hundred, two hundred by two hundred. We talked about different shapes, and again, this is where we kind of got to, um, providing more examples. So any thoughts or comments on the way it's drafted now?
So I put those examples together to help demonstrate that um, requiring a minimum of two hundred square feet per house is, I believe, very unnecessary and kind of cumbersome because each there, you have to have ten feet between each structure. And you have, and if we only have thirty-five or even forty percent of multifamily standard, thirty-five or forty percent lot coverage, um, you, you will have that much open space by nature. Um, so to say, to have an additional requirement that you need two hundred square feet for cottage houses is just like adding another metric, which I don't think will achieve anything. So I think I would like to get rid of each cottage shall have a certain amount of space dedicated to it. I think we should just, if we feel strongly that it should, cottage housing should actually be courtyard housing and that they should base on a shared open space, then we should just say this is the minimum size of the shared open space on the property. And that could be something like twenty by twenty unless otherwise approved because you have some unique law requirements and that could be administratively given an exception if they have a close enough courtyard or uh, whatever other size people think is appropriate. If, if we feel it's important to have them actually be arranged like a courtyard. So that example, part of why they're so small is because that central space down the middle is nineteen feet wide, but that's to the fronts of the porches. So really, if you offset the porches, you would easily have a twenty by twenty square space. You have two of them um, between those units. Um. And you know, the units could be larger with just a narrow walkway down the middle if we didn't have a minimum minimum dimensions to that space, to the shared space. But like, even if those were wider and you only had like eight feet down the middle instead of nineteen, you would still have two hundred square feet of open space per unit, like on the site as a whole. So that requirement is just sort of extra. Versus the second option that I showed.
I'll go there.
Can you zoom out a little bit so you can see the whole thing?
That'll help.
A little further.
Okay.
Okay, so that one, this is what it could look like if you like maxed it out and you did not require a courtyard. But if you did want a courtyard, you could just take out one of those units and have a courtyard in its place. And that would be a nice little arrangement. You know, versus that one, you have the most number of units, big courtyard down the middle. Um. So that's why I shared the example, was because I think the the, with the
Oh, how?
With the density, I think we could simplify that to just be like unless otherwise noted in this section, it follows the underlying standards of like thirty-five or forty percent lot coverage. And open space, I think, is if we want to define that there shall be a courtyard of a minimum dimension because there will be open space on the lot.
I, I would agree, uh, this, these examples would only work if you have a perfectly square or rectangle lot that's on a corner, uh, in a, in a, you know, kind of a more urban part of town. Whereas I think there, there could be potentially lots that might have, uh, might have but some natural features that might make more sense to adjust, uh, a central courtyard and maybe do an outward facing courtyard. Um, so I think defaulting to the maximum block, block use is a better way to do this. Just creates more creativity or creativity in adding that, that green space or what's the dry space, I guess we'd call it.
But if you don't require it, nobody's going to use it, do it. I mean, I think, yeah, I need to say, but if you have other options, great, but when you don't, and they don't require it, I feel like where you are taking, I mean, I know we're going for density, but I think we're also going for feel. You know, we're going for the neighborhood feel. And I have to tell you, the difference of having, you know, roughly nineteen feet and then with the porches difference as opposed to eleven feet difference, that just sounds like literally a house is going to be eleven feet away from me. And once again, I understand the concept of that, we're trying to provide more housing for people. I don't know, I
I, what I would suggest after doing this is that we say uh, forty percent lot coverage. And I say that mostly to allow for potentially covered parking because that will count towards the lot coverage. Um, so forty percent lot coverage because the, the parking has to take up so much space that like you're, it's going to be impossible to exceed thirty-five percent lot coverage um, unless you include the parking. So then once the parking is covered and that is part of your lot coverage, you could potentially go to forty without, you know, there. So I, I would say forty percent lot coverage and then say for open space, have a twenty foot by twenty foot minimum courtyard, which may be a, adjusted or, you know, altered based on administrative discretion, essentially. So that if there's a situation where they're like, oh, we're just a few feet off, but look, we still are like needing the spirit of the open space courtyard requirement, you know, but would this meet that?
Your second page?
No, the second page would not unless you took out one of those units, which I almost just drew it that way.
Okay.
With like five, because instead of six, because then it would have a nice courtyard.
Right, and I have to say, so, so this is nine hundred and thirty-six square feet footprint. And these are smaller, but I think that, you know, you know, on one hand, we want to make it appealable to people who want to develop. I get that. But if the other side is, we're not looking to make a bunch of large houses. And so to me, this fits what I call cottage housing.
And those are extraordinarily tiny.
They are tiny. But you're also getting eight houses on that half of the paper, which is a lot.
So the second option are more like not ridiculously tiny houses. So if you imagine taking one of those away so that you had a courtyard.
I mean, honestly, this is, you know.
But, but then there's seven, seven, six feet and nine thirty.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's like a two-bedroom.
Right. I mean, the, this is the footprint of my house on, you know, the six hundred square foot lot. I just, that is not what I'm picturing when I'm thinking of, we're trying to get some density of, I mean, you know, the word cottage or nonsense or the custom people cottage, but it's, that is partially why it's called that.
But we did agree on what was in the script.
Yeah, against my, my wanting. Because I still felt like it's that a lot, you know?
Yeah.
Um, and that's fine. I mean, it's okay to do that, but I'm telling you, like, that still doesn't fit into what I'm thinking. So, you know, I, I love that you did these pictures and I think like, and, and it's always boring to look at a big square or a back table. Yeah, it is, because it's hard to picture it, you know, and is this, are there streets on two sides of this? Is it on one side? All those things. And doesn't have a back, like, you know, some places in town totally have nature of that ground and that can make a difference. But it leads us to me, um, this promotes a little bit of what I think of cottage housing, like the so facing each other, there's common ground in the middle, you know, much more than the other two do.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in my mind with cottage housing is, it's an opportunity to create community within my neighborhood. Um, and provides smaller housing, which is what now nationwide we're lacking, especially Now, basically we're lacking especially for aging population. Um, and so I like that, but I I think that. If we can write into code a way to create more optimism for us to build out community among those. Cottage housing developments, but it would be ideal, so I don't know. I know with that, I also use your data tech, but you know, how would we, how would the code look in order for someone to build? That for that value? So do we leave in those stipulations that they happen to have a courtyard?
I think so, I think. Um. Yeah, like I think saying. Forty percent lot coverage and. A minimum dimensions of a courtyard, because this is the thing is if you just say a minimum of four hundred square feet. That could be, they could say, well, it is four hundred square feet, it's long, skinny, forty square feet, so that's why I think instead of a square footage, it should be dimensions. If we want it to be. A a yard, like shared. Yard and and that should have some flexibility because lots are going to be shaped differently. The other thing I thought about is if. The the one thing about that, the only thing I don't love about saying, you know, twenty by twenty. Is that will. That will mean if we say that it will probably never happen on a small lot like that seventy two hundred square foot lot I drew it on. Which that's a common lot size in my department. Um, the like sixty by one twenty, if you said, well, you have to have a twenty by twenty courtyard or similar. I mean, maybe if they had an alley. And you didn't have to have a driveway go down, you know, that's that's based on it not being an alley and having a driveway out the street, so if they had an alley, they could do it.
Even if you rearranged them so they weren't all like.
It was a pretty weird. It would it'd be tricky, um.
But I only but I also don't really feel that you're, I mean, you know. I mean, you said this is seventy two hundred. It seems to me that we have a lot of six thousand square feet and then we kind of jump to the eight thousand or more, but. You know, I I kind of feel like unless it's just right, most of those small lots are. And it just like you're gonna do a, you know, ADU and yeah.
Yeah.
All of it, yeah. The times I've seen it work on very small lots in other towns is usually when somebody has an existing house, they convert a garage and then they build that type of one.
Even. When I commented that on the example that is the eight. Those are twice the size of tiny homes.
Right.
Right, so. Those those are big, right, so think about who who would live here? This is someone that's upgraded from an apartment or a tiny home.
Well, the one with eight, you know, you know, could potentially be nine hundred and sixty eight.
Most of the doors, yeah.
And as I like to say, my house when I bought it was about seven fifty square feet, three bedrooms, two baths.
Yeah, but.
I mean, so you could be a chance with two kids and live there and I mean, if you're apparently with three kids and two of them share a room, you know, people will do it. They should be doing that more.
And my house is the only thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also, I mean, just thinking of like my own parents currently have a two story, I don't know how many, three thousand square foot house. And they're not going to be able to maintain it or live in it for much longer. And so if there was an opportunity to have a smaller one story house and no such thing.
I mean, this is the first page showing the eight eight homes on a half acre. That they could all potentially be, you know. Almost about between nine fifty and a thousand square feet is. That is eight homes, that's eight homes of eight families living.
Otherwise, it'd be one.
Right.
With a courtyard down the.
With a courtyard down the middle.
And less than forty percent lot coverage. Um, yeah, so what do you?
But I agree with you about the forty percent. Then because of it.
Because of our party, yeah.
Yeah, I'll go a bit opposite direction, I think forty percent is out of quick language. Uh, I want to create opportunity over setting. But I appreciate your point as well, so I think there's a happy ground for that also.
Here, I and and Lilith and, you know, probably Allison can answer this too, I mean, isn't that where? You can apply, you can try for variances because of the situation of the lot and and the other, you know, the other options? Because as we all know.
In terms of.
Right. You know, because if if we if we leave it open, they're always going to take.
Yeah.
You know, I so so I like what you're saying, but but to me, it's a very specific thing, like depending on where the lot is or where in town, where the summer pool is, all that stuff, so.
That's why I think. Um, in the in a previous version, Lilith had. Some language in there about like twenty by twenty, but then you had. Or. Similar with administrative approval, you know.
Right.
So so there was little room in there for if somebody comes and says that. Twenty by twenty is not going to work because of the shape of the lot, but I'm still providing a courtyard, that can still be approved case by case.
Because, yeah, and I I kind of agree with Andy's point that it's it's, um, you know, it's density, but it's also a a vibe. Um, because when I looked at the one like this one, it's like, well, what's the difference? Really, in terms of the living experience there and it being a new neighborhood, what's the difference between this and basically a a triplex? You know, it's really not that much different and I. I I do agree that if we don't put something in there requiring. Some semblance of community type interactions, it it just won't happen. Not that I'm a total cynic, but.
Okay, what do you guys think of the concept of saying thirty five percent lot coverage? And if you provide covered parking or garage parking, forty percent lot coverage. That may encourage that type, which I think is beneficial to everybody, but not mandated. And then if they provide. A common building for common use. We could bump it up to forty five percent lot coverage. Because we talked last time about having common shed to work in or a common meeting space. A common tool room or crafting or utility room. Um, so there was some desire for that, so what do you think about tying those amenities to additional lot coverage as a way of encouraging them?
I think we should leave it at forty and not not separate out the parking because I don't think it will. Actually be possible due to the ten foot separation. Um, like that was part of my exercise of drawing out just boxes. Was like, I really don't think it will be possible to exceed to to even like. Yeah, you're not going to exceed thirty five percent lot coverage. Without including the parking in the lot coverage anyway. So so like, I don't think we have to just use the extra code language and make it more complicated by calling that out because. It's like kind of still possible, so forty percent. Because parking has to be there somewhere. Um. But I would be open to increasing it if they provide like a needy building.
I think so, good incentives.
Because that's that's more cut and dry than parking, which could be like. In many different arrangements, so.
Yeah, and I like I like the idea of an incentive for additional lot coverage for the.
Which I don't think anybody's going to do because that's minus the house. I like the idea, I I would love it if you had it, but. Um. That's.
Yeah, I still struggle and I'm going to be honest and I know everybody hates me for this.
And and it's not going to happen, but I just have to say, you know, I've been reading multiple, it seems, you know, it's the number one article out there. And everything is is about housing right now and. You know, we always say because of where we live, we have to have parking. And it's very interesting to read about other communities where they just flat out say things like. We're not going to provide parking.
Austin just dropped it.
Right, and I realize they don't have snow, so there's those things, but you know, people want housing and they and they want and and. I look at the people who live in the rentals over behind Safeway, I mean, those places have nothing and. They're they're full because people need housing.
There's like parking crisis.
They do, and so I'm not not saying to take away the parking, I know it's not going to happen, but it's sort of like, I thought about this a lot, we we did talk a lot in the last meeting about having the shed and I. And I and I agree, like, you know, you want to be able to have a place, especially if you're going to have a green area, like, we're going to have a lawn mower or maybe a community lawn mower. And I guess my feeling is instead of saying, or that it's harder to have storage when you live in a small house, but I think part of me is like. Maybe if we set for that storage, we have one storage place, that's a communal storage place because there is going to be green space, but other than that. You know, everybody doesn't get to have storage.
Well, also, if they have a car, they can and they can drive to storage, I mean, where it's where it's not at such a premium. Um.
I do worry about the. Like, who's going to maintain the green space on the property?
Well, if it were a natural scape, nature would.
Right.
Um, but if if people are going to get into their lawns and such, then. I mean, it would probably look like the HOA would need to cover a service rather than it being done on site. Um. But I mean, if we said. You know, for so for the density section, I can just say the number of cottage houses shall be limited to that number which meet these standards, including, yeah. Um, including. Or I guess these standards are underlying standards, but somewhere in there, the forty percent. Like, I don't think we need the example. A sample density calculation, I guess it's good, but anyway, that would be forty percent and then. I guess in that section, say. Lot coverage can be increased to forty five percent if it includes a. Shared. Or communal building, however, however, we can define that as like. Any any structure that is. For. The use of everybody on site, you know, whatever communal building is defined as. Because that could be more like a storage area, shed, garden, you know, like a garden shed kind of thing, or it could be a. Community.
That I know.
One of the. Well, one of the other things is like. That's that's getting into the amenities and then like if if the point is to create places for people to live. I mean, shouldn't we kind of be focusing on that and then people can go elsewhere for amenities because we're. We it 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 seems like these are are optional and they would want to have and if some developer wants to come in and have super luxurious cottages. They could devote a space for those sorts of amenities. Um, if if they choose and if they have the space, but I I.
Yeah, I mean, that's the point of saying like forty percent lot coverage because.
Yeah, but that is forty five is a bit.
So we'll say in forty five, that's like an incentive. That like if you choose to provide this additional amenity, then you can try to.
You're not going to be penalized. I mean, that's the other way of thinking of it, if if they want to provide a communal space, it's a penalty. They they have to lose the size of all their buildings in order to make the communal space when the concept is cottage housing, which is. Centered around the concept of, you know, being a mini community in your neighborhood, so. Um, we're not penalizing them for providing an amenity. That's that's one way of looking at it.
Yeah.
Would the forty five percent coverage pose issues for? Like the way that water flows and I mean, snow and all that, I mean, forty five is still.
I mean, you still have to address all your stormwater needs per separate code. Like. Basically, with. With any indoor lot in Levelworth. That is not part of a new. Flat that has its own stormwater system, you have to deal with all your stormwater on site regardless, so. They would just have to also have room for that, I think that's a problem.
Well, all these would have to be approved anyway, right? These would all undergo a certain amount of review, so I mean. To Lilith's point, I I think, yeah, if you want to. Okay, I mean. If you want to encourage that, I just. And not analyze them, I mean, I I I understand that, I just think, eh, that's kind of. Sharing those spaces also requires more administrative oversight and like then it's starting to seem more like like, you know. Bigger than a a cottage vibe and people don't want big HOAs and, you know, I don't know. If who's going to keep people from storing all their junk in there anyway, you know, how do you like?
I mean, I think. Like our job. When writing the code is to provide options.
Sure.
We don't control.
Yeah, but.
How those options are used and I don't think that by saying. There is like. An incentive or a perk or a. Lack of penalty for providing a shared space that we are encouraging. Um. People to. I don't know, I use it poorly, I guess.
So but so like when we had that that presentation from wherever they have it.
Oh, the West Side.
Yeah, Port Talon or something like that.
Oh, yeah, we call it.
Co-housing and all that sort of stuff, like.
Where I wanted to.
What was that?
Where I wanted to. In about eight years.
Yeah, and currently, uh, currently I go and allow that. Right, but.
Right, because they have a shared building. Like the co-housing, because co-housing instead of like cottage housing is a land use type, co-housing is an ownership structure.
Right.
That requires that that part of the deal with co-housing is that you have community spaces.
Right.
And so we, yeah, so the idea of like a bonus for having a community space is like, oh, that. Incentivizes this to be used for co-housing.
Right.
As well, that, yeah, that's kind of how I.
So how is that possible, Dave?
Um, Drew, can we open it up for larger discussion with anyone in attendance?
Yeah, we got through all of the likes.
Did we settle on the like twenty by twenty? But but we don't space for the.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure we're aligned on that, so does anyone? Have a strong opinion about, I I like the idea of adding the. Uh, up to the administrative discretion.
Yeah.
Is a nice, clean, easy way to make this flexible.
Sure. So no more square footage, just a dimensional space up to there.
Aggregates space up to administrative discretion.
Does that make your life a nightmare though, Lilith?
No, not too bad, I'll work on the wording and we'll run it through legal, I I I'll give the minimum that we would prefer. Um, but administratively may be modified and then we'll we'll see how that works.
So, oh, I mean.
Do you remember Lilith's where the the one that came and presented about co-housing, where was that from, or what it was called?
I can look it up, um, yeah, let me look it up here real quick. Um, feel free to move on with the discussion, it'll take me just a minute.
So let's put a pin on that exact one, but in the meantime, we're just pulling it up, we can open it up to all the comments, is it?
Hi, that sounds like a good proposal, thank you. Do you know it or you just did that, Mike?
Uh, I read the. Meeting that's.
Somebody does that.
Yeah, Linda and Paulie online hunting too.
Yeah, so Paulie, I think you were first, do you want to jump in here for the question?
Yeah, I just just a couple of comments, one is you were talking about the storage space and a lot of people that moved to Levelworth, I mean, they obviously work here, but they're also. A lot of people are outdoorsy even into their later years. And my thought is, um, you know, a storage cottage, a storage on the, um, it doesn't have to be like put on the outside, but even something by the front door, there's actually, you know, kind of inset. That would have access from the outsides, they put their skis there, they could put their boots there, they could even like hang a bike there, you know, something like even five by five feet. You know, if you put it up where they kind of first enter in, it's kind of built into. You know, if you put it up where they kind of first enter in, it's kind of built into the unit where it doesn't like protrude out. Would give them at least that option, um, that they wouldn't have to be dragging those things, you know, into their their home. Um, and then the other thing too, is is I was also thinking about that, a great presentation from the Houses in Port Townsend, and the one thing that gave them a lot of space was having that shared wall. And so if you did something like that, um, where you could have a shared wall, you know, that would that would give you a little bit more space for for an open space, you might be able to rearrange a little bit differently on the lot, as far as the open space in the parking. And then, the third thing I was thinking about, um, the thirty-five percent lot coverage. And you were talking about thirty-five percent or forty percent of theirs covered parking and and Alison had, I think it was Alison that had a good point, that it's like, well, that's already, I mean, it is covered space already, and so, um, so I I assume that the parking was already entered into the equation that there has to be parking. And so I'm not sure that that, you know, thirty-five really needs to be extended to forty, because it sounds like you had already thought thirty-five, you know, whether the parking was covered or not, the coverage was pretty much the parking itself. Um, and then the last thing I was thinking about was, um, so then if you extend to, um, from forty to forty-five, if somebody includes a kind of a common area, you know, of five percent of, um, of a six thousand foot square foot lot is only three hundred square feet, so I'm not sure, you know, really what kind of a common area you would be thinking about, if that would be big enough to have a a kitchen and then have people to gather, or, um, you know, I I'm not sure that you would be having all kinds of tools there, but, um, so anyway, just just thoughts, thank you.
Thanks, Paulie.
To go to, I just wanna clarify the lot coverage thing really quick. Parking is not included in lot coverage unless it is covered. Like uncovered, just surface parking is not, does not count toward lot coverage. So that's why.
So, okay, so then then I probably agree that, you know, the thirty-five percent coverage would be uh, adequate unless they decide to cover, you know, the parking, I mean, that that makes sense to me.
That's why you suggested doing forty percent, so that it would be possible to cover the parking.
Right, yes, as opposed to just being a forty percent.
Okay, it's Quimper Village, and I can pull up, you know, the, one of the site plans, let's pull that on, one up, and this one.
Let's, I'm gonna go to Linda really quick.
Sounds good.
Linda?
So with regard to parking, um, it would seem like this is a neighborhood. And now you've got eight cars lined up against a back lot on one of those. Um, I don't think I'd wanna live on the other side of that eight feet of cars, or eight cars parking in there without being covered or shielded, or how how are you gonna make it so it's not a nightmare for the person living on the other side of the fence in their residential neighborhood? Just a thought.
Good discussion, Linda, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, there, uh, the multifamily, if you're doing a parking lot right now, we have, and parking lots described, I think it was four, more than four parking spaces. Um, we require a landscape buffer between them and the residential lot. Um, but we could note that in the cottage section. Would you like me to pull up some of the Quimper images?
I I I found it, thank you.
I think we're. I would.
Okay.
You remember though, when they were here, cause you were there that night.
I was.
Yeah.
But you know, you had to be vetted to even get into that community by the order of evidence.
Right, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
I I.
Well, now, Tom, you're talking about, this is like the best of the concept, right?
Well, I didn't, I'm listening, I, if I'm hearing correctly, it seems like the cottage housing with a a community area and all that, is that, would that be slated to go in, uh, RL six?
Yeah.
Or is this, um, in, um, multifamily, or, you know? It sounds like a little community.
All residential zones.
Okay, it sounds like its own little community, rather than being a part of the community, the, you know, the rest of the houses there, with their, you know, their own little thing, it's kind of showing off.
I think, I think it's, I mean, I don't think it one excludes the other. I mean, that's like saying that you're friends with your neighbors, so you're not friends with the people down the street. I I don't think it excludes it, I just think it's a way to create more community.
I don't know, it doesn't sound like it fits in the character of RL six, though.
Well, honestly, as we were saying, I mean, we, it's allowed in RL six if you can make all of the numbers work. But most likely, that is not where it's going to happen, because it would be very limited in on a six thousand square foot lot. So, you know, we're talking about some of the larger lots that are in town, where instead of building one house, they maybe put in six smaller homes and make it more of a community.
So would it be some types of cottage housing wouldn't be allowed in RL six?
It all comes down to literally following the rules of what fits on a lot, so you have to meet your setbacks. You have to meet, you know, your percentage of lot coverage, you have to meet all the same rules of anybody building a house. We're just saying that you can do more than one with smaller footprints, but what we're also saying is that on a six thousand square foot lot, it probably would not happen very much, because it would be very tight. So chances are, if somebody wants to make an extra living space on a six thousand square foot lot, they're probably gonna go for the EBU. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
It does, but I just don't like the open door, I guess. That's just me.
Right, but there's also a limit to, I mean, it could only be so crowded, because they could only, they have to meet all of the other requirements of building on a six thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, sure. We're gonna take another question here, comment?
Thanks, Drew, uh, James Whiteside's one fifty-six west of, and so, um, there are a couple of things, uh, what, I, in the notes and everything I read, I didn't see discussion of other cottage housing code that has been studied. Um, Redmond's code is extremely comprehensive, if you have a city of Redmond, and they exclude RL six. They exclude small lots, um, and that is a recommendation I'd like the the planning commission to consider. It, not from necessarily necessarily an aesthetics problem, but mostly from a density problem, um, where you won't get density. You'll end up with things like two thirty-eight, um, prospects, which is three tall units. Um, you'll end up with kind of lacking the 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 density you need in order for developers to build on it. So build, construct it around the developer's perspective. Um, the other piece, um, that I don't see in the code right now, Lilith, that I think would be beneficial there is there, um, there are no um, considerations for square footage that can be excluded from the coverage. So cold storage underneath a unit, um, sort of to Paulie's point, to some degree, storage spaces attached to a unit or built within the unit's structure itself can be excluded based on some sets of code scattered around the west. So I think there's opportunity to define that a little bit better and give people, uh, give developers the capability to build under a structure or create some other storage option. Um, yeah.
That would, um, it wouldn't count toward block coverage, goes underneath.
It it does not.
There's not that square footage.
Square footage of the house, yeah, so it wouldn't count towards square footage of the house, would not be considered a ground floor. Um, there's also a few provisions I've seen that state very clearly that, um, the ground floor of the unit cannot be more than eighty percent of the total structural, total structure. So you can't build like a weird pillar style side. It it's kind of defining it to make sure that they are square and that you maintain kind of the maximum density on the lot. If that makes sense, so, that.
I think we have different ideas of how density is defined.
No, the mag, the the.
Because I guess more.
So in the in the point where someone would not build silly structures. So like, it's more of a structural consideration to maintain like, um, not building something that that has a weird, weird design to it.
I think, I think it was intended, I I think there are some limitations on what the second story could be, and and there's, it's it's written, I think it was designed to be something more like a loft rather than a proper second story, did I get that wrong?
Well, we said twenty foot height limit, which is substantially, you know, I mean.
Yeah, but it should be a whole two-story structure.
So it could be.
Uh, two, seven, half foot.
Yeah, because we had talked about eighteen feet, and we opted to allow for the second story and go for the full twenty feet. So.
So, um, we did look at other codes earlier in this discussion.
I don't remember Snow Homage being one that was referenced early on, so how much.
Yeah, and there's, there's a couple of different meetings where we went through like, a whole bunch of different code, and then looked at, you know, so that's kind of where we came up with a lot of things, like the maximum size and, um, but also, we talked about how we specifically wanted to create a code section that was, um, as simple as possible, because as simple, like, more simple, less detail and specificity to all the requirements means it's more likely to actually get used. Because every single additional requirement makes it more and more repetitive and less and less.
And it leads to Lilith having to do more interrogations, right? Cause it's taking more time and.
Yeah. Yeah, so this, we're trying to keep it with like, what are the ways in which it deviates from the underlying code? The main one being, well, you're allowed to have more than one single-family resident, plus an EBU on a lot. Um, you know, how is, how is that addressed? But like, with the storage, it, we did at one point have a provision, like at our last meeting, I think, we talked about having a storage provision that you would you would get an allowance on top of the square footage that each structure would allow to have. But we have a twelve hundred square foot limit, which as discussed, is quite large.
Yeah.
So like, you can fit the storage you need in that amount of space, in my opinion, like, this is cottage housing. Again, like, I mean, I lived in, like, in a seven hundred square foot, six hundred square foot apartment with zero storage space, except for my spare bedroom, which was actually like completely full of all of my gear, so like, that's, that's what people do, like, it's like, you can figure it out if you're gonna live in that small space, I don't know. That maybe they should get any extra provision.
Um, and one last comment on the the green space definition, the open space definition, um, could that be tighter right now? It feels a little like, to the point of not making it too restrictive, um, it does not define like, um, how distance a house can be from it. And there are some, if people get too bigger lot sizes, they could configure in a way that one unit could be further away from the green space than others, and it doesn't just define that. That's more for, say, someone getting to the ten thousand square foot lot or bigger. So that's the main thought there, just to make sure that that's defined within the, instead of people doing a very, the central corridor model, they have a green, a corner lot where they put the green space on the corner and then put one house in the back edge.
You're talking about encouraging it to be more central, like, assuming it isn't.
Or not encouraging it to be central, just defining the path to the open space, or defining how the open space must be ordered, like houses on two sides, things like that. Typically, it will always be the central corridor model, that's the only way you can make it, Alison showed that in the drawings.
Well, there's one word. The second option, you know, could be like, all of them based on the courtyard.
Yeah, centrally based, yeah.
I.
I'm sorry.
No, it's not disagreeing, it's asking a question of like, should that be defined?
Didn't Snow Homage exactly require individual yards?
Plus a, plus a common space.
Plus a common space.
Yeah, I mean, they all have to be ten feet apart, based on part of.
Which is gonna naturally force.
Which.
Open space.
Which creates a certain amount of open space and certain isolation space between.
So, so I, going back to her comment, keeping this as minimalistic as possible is probably where I might hurt at on this, um, I think that there are enough codes already, where there are setbacks, where we required open space with administrative discretion that covers all of that, that's what keeps it too attractive enough that this couldn't actually happen. We just don't wanna outsmart, outthink ourselves to a point that this doesn't.
And one of the, I I remember this was raised earlier, that, um, you know, if people need to follow the letter of the law, there's something that seems, you'll you'll end up with some, I think Lilith commented that in her community, there were some where there's a requirement for a specific amount of yard for each unit, and you end up with weird shapes and stuff that doesn't make any sense. Um, so, I I I'm inclined to agree with the, uh, the simplicity thing, but, you know, I I I share your concerns about the the spirit and the vibe of it.
Mm-hmm. Yes, uh-huh, just one other consideration.
Just take your name.
Sorry, Jordan.
Patrice.
Uh, no.
I'll say sixty.
Um, one other angle on this, I'm super excited this conversation's happening, it's been recommended in housing studies for like a decade. Um, I think it could provide a lot of density in a good way to make living spaces for families that are more affordable. Um, everything, the conversation seems to be generally around infill. I just like to consider the possibility of new subdivisions, and how this code could be used to, um, actually be optimized to create well-built houses on small lots that bring down the cost of affordability. The whole model of multiple houses on a single lot creates housing, doesn't necessarily create housing security, because if you don't own your house, you're always sort of wondering if you're gonna have it. If the state's working on legislation that lets you buy the house, not the land, you know, that provides some surety. But, um, I would love, uh, just in the back of your minds, if there's a mechanism to create smaller lots through the cottage housing code, that would allow houses to sit on their own lot, so people could own them free and clear?
I I think that's already part of it, though, don't you own the land underneath the cottage housing?
No.
This is kind of a separate topic, like, the.
Unit lot development. Sorry, Alison, the, yeah, the unit lot development is what we have on our jacket to discuss, as part of the state law changes.
But that is you own the structure and not the home.
Unit lot subdivision is like, each each house is on its own little.
Yeah.
Piece of land.
Lot, yeah.
Okay.
So it's different than condos.
So as it's currently written, if you did a cluster subdivision and did three thousand square foot lots, could you use the cottage housing code to put a twelve hundred square foot house on a three thousand square foot lot and have common parking off-site? Or off the lot, within two hundred feet of the homes? So you come into a, you know, common parking area, and then you walk to your house on your lot.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, I, so.
Well, I think you could, can't you do that just with the cot, with the, um, cluster, Jordan? There's something in the cluster that says your parking has to be on your lot, is there? Oh, it has to front, yeah.
But the problem with that is driveways and garages take up an enormous amount of space.
Yeah, and they have to front a street.
Yeah, so you can't have a house behind another house.
Mm-hmm.
Under current code, cluster code, you could, if you could combine.
Yeah.
Uh, a cluster subdivision with a, with cottage housing code.
Can you do parking grouped elsewhere with a PD, like, all?
Well, a PD might get you closer, um, yeah, that might get you, might get you closer. We run into problems, um, within the city and the fire district. That whole concept of alternative road standards and having a, a road frontage, um. No, interesting question, Jordan, as usual, you're one step ahead of us. Um, we, um, we will be talking about the unit lot development, which will allow those houses to be sold off separately, this change in state law. Um, they're looking at requiring us to allow them to be condominiumized and sold as individual units. Um, what I've heard from the community over the last several years is they want people to own a piece of land with their home, so they're feel responsible to maintain that land, rather than having the, uh, yard space maintained by a third party or homeowners association, which may or may not do a good job, especially when they're smaller, um, smaller homeowner associations. Yeah, so Jordan, I'm not seeing how we can get there yet with this development.
Well, why? What's the piece that wouldn't allow it?
Because we're not changing the subdivision rules right now. We're just adding cottage housing. And really, you're talking about an ownership model. And that's different than a development.
Can I, can I use a cluster subdivision? To get three thousand square foot lots and then do cottage housing on the three thousand square foot lots with shared parking?
Yeah, well, but when you do the cluster, you're gonna have to have the. Frontage for your street. So you're, that's where you're running into your problem.
Different of a conversation, but talking about the missing middle, it's a totally different, you know, it's a step between the four, five hundred and twenty-five square foot house. And the twelve and six, you know, or the whatever seventeen hundred square foot house, so.
I mean, this is definitely. Written as. A, a way to use. One single family lot. And I could see how everything would still be met if you did. Uh, unit lot subdivision, because then it would be like the men houses where there's like the one overarching parcel and then.
Yeah, but you have a condominium.
Um.
Those, those are condominiums.
Yeah.
Those are condos?
You don't, yeah.
But I guess.
Could, could you not on the developments like a viable lots and then potentially with this new law, be able to, they subdivide it out. Sounds like it's still becoming, so anyway, I don't wanna distract the conversation, but.
Cause he wants us to make him sell their house and stuff.
The you own the thing and you're not, you don't, you know, you're part of an each your way, but you don't have a condo.
Yeah.
Has all kinds of.
Yeah, I can see how, um.
Jordan, the, they have changed some of the state law. To minimize the potential liabilities to the developer with the condos. So I don't know how recently you've had that analysis done, but I. I do know they deliberately made changes to state law to encourage the condominiumize and reduce the liability to the developer. So worth looking into. Let's come back to that topic another time. Um, I, I do wanna have a little bit of time with the new code, um, Drew and, and everybody here. So is there. Maybe one more round of questions or comments on the. Proposal that we've been discussing?
Unless the community has anything else, I think we're ready to move forward to the next topic. Um, but Jordan, thanks for bringing up that question. I think that might be something we might, if you bring up the work around next year, right?
Now, I guess, I, my. My comment to what you're saying is so, to Lilith and to you here is. Uh. Is how could we make something like that happen that would potentially create a community? Uh, and a community feel within a development. Like how do we have code that incentivizes? And I always come back to neighborhoods we've been in Oregon and I know they have different land use laws. But when you walk around those, those newer neighborhoods, it has an unbelievable sense of community. And, but it looks very different and they have to have a different code, I'm sure, to make that happen. So.
Well, they also created, it's kind of nice cause they did it on the front side. We're trying to do it on the back side. Now we already have. Our streets, our lots and so that makes it more.
So that's the thing, if we don't, and as we're, as we're, we're talking about. I mean cottage housing is written to largely apply to infill because they're talking about how to use. One lot that already exists and you want more houses versus if you're deciding how to flat. A larger area, then, I don't know, I'm, I'm a fan of trying to make the PD code easier to use. In a lot of ways, because I think that would probably be more relevant to like new development. But, but part of having your cottage housing section is because the PD code is very cumbersome for you, so. It's true, it's true.
All right, uh, let's move to the draft of consistency in this.
Uh, thank you much. And thank you, everybody who's provided comment on cottage housing. We will talk about it again next month with a cleaner draft. And maybe aim for a public hearing in March if we're feeling close enough to doing that. Is that. Uh, what I'm hearing is a consensus from the planning commission?
Yeah, thank you Jake, tonight's notes and then we can probably put this to rest next month and then go to public.
Okay. Um. So I sent in a large. Document of potential code amendments and I tried to provide a rationale for each one. Um, just to be clear, this might come to the city council by, um, April. It would ideally come to the planning commission in March or at least portions of it will. And I do have additional changes to add. From Public Works, uh, and so what I'll end up doing is breaking this document into zoning related. Um, amendments that might include Title fourteen and portions of fifteen. We'll have Public Works amendments. And then we have a whole section in here that is flood regulations. Uh, and so we'll have a section on flood. Uh, so I'm hoping by breaking it up, it'll make the discussions easier. But I'm also hoping that pro, by providing the proposed amendment. And a rationale statement, which I can add to and clarify, that the review goes smoothly. Uh, that's my hope. I do tend to get a little too government ease in my communications sometimes. So those rationale statements may need to be further refined. Again, don't hesitate to tell me. That, you know, something's not really understandable or needs more work. I, I don't take it personally. Um. So having said that. We'll walk through a few of these, um, and some of them I will just jump through and then it. If we're starting to run short on time, which we will, uh, I will just turn it back to you guys and. Ask you if you've reviewed them and if you had any questions on any one in particular. Okay, so. The first one that's listed there is just redundant code. It was already moved. It just may not have gotten deleted for some reason. So that's duplicate code. Uh. That's fairly easy. The second one is lighting standards. This is related to the design review board and their re, review. When the apartments in Leavenworth Meadows behind Rattlesnake Hill off of Chumsick came in. They had to go to the design review board for a review of their lighting permit. And the board. Didn't really want to deal with multifamily. They want to do commercial projects, um, so. We, we don't think that that needs to be included here, so I'm exempting out multifamily zoning. But I don't wanna change the code references listed here. Uh, the fourteen twenty-eight point oh eight oh. Zone one. The multifamily still needs to meet the lighting requirements. They just won't need to go to the design review board with this change. Okay, residential parking, uh, we wanted to be clear, the planning commission had said. We do wanna allow bed and breakfast to have access from an alley, but we don't want to authorize that. Until after we've done the density review. So we've done the density, we've adopted those regulations and I wanna be very. Transparent and call out B and Bs and say that they can be. Accessed from an alley. And that's. I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then home occupations, this is a really old code section. Uh, there's an intent state, uh, under the definitions, there's a intent or purpose statement. I wanna move that to regulations. Uh, there's also a list of what types of. Home occupations mean in, and I'm, so I'm moving things around in these sections here. So that's what you're seeing. Uh, seeing happen on those two, home occupation and B. Uh. There's the new, there's the new intent language. And my explanation about how things were moved. And then for home occupation A, we want to actually streamline that process. When they come in for their business license. We really just wanna check them off and say, yeah, you're, uh, doing accounting out of a desk on your dining room table. Okay, you don't need to do anything more. Thanks for letting us know. We're gonna approve your business license. So we kinda want to make a really super streamlined. And then if a home occ. A, as defined. Allows for maybe an occasional customer, which the current code does allow. We'll might do a secondary, more extensive, but still administrative review that we currently do. Where we walk through each of the current code regulations and we write out a notice of decision saying. You can do this, but you still have to maintain all these rules. Uh. So we would divide it up. One of the rules that we have is that not more than twenty percent of a total floor area for that. Floor, any one floor of the residence. And then we also have a maximum square footage, um, and number eight, you'll see that here. Uh, this gets confusing for both staff and the applicant. We're asking them. Twice to tell us how many square feet they're using. We also have a lot of smaller units now and some of the apartment units that are using. Their apartment for a home occupation. So staff is recommending that we just drop the square feet down to a hundred square feet. Or not over twenty percent of any of the total floor area. And that will make that a lot easier. Floor area is available on the county assessor's website. So we have a neutral place to pull that data number from. And so does the applicant, so they know what their limit's gonna be. Um. Anyway.
But then on number E.
Yeah, that's of, of accessory. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to confuse you earlier. Uh, if they're using their home occupation as being conducted in a detached garage or accessory. It can't be more than five hundred square feet.
I, so just, just out of curiosity, this means that because I work from home. I technically, and I, I've done so for, you know, over a decade. Technically, I'm supposed to have a business license with the city of Leavenworth saying that I work from a desk in my house?
Um, do, do you own your own business?
No.
Okay, no.
All right, that's.
Only, o- only if you own your own business. If you're doing. Mm-hmm.
I was like, I didn't know, I was like, I don't comply, so also really?
Good question.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And then we're providing a similar type amendment for group B home occupations. And those are ones that have visitors to the home more often, say, uh. A hair salon, you know, some of my. Hair. Their home.
Uh-oh, no.
Hey, that. I'm sorry, what's that? I'm sorry, yeah, it says my internet connection's a little spotty. I apologize. Um, okay, so there's more changes to group B. I encourage you to look at those independently. Let me know if you have questions. Um, we wanna do a new title section for, uh, fees, bonds, development agreements. I have to run this one through the legal more closely, but right now we do, um, bonding in a couple of different sections. And that's called resulted in some confusion and. Kind of over using a section of code that really wasn't meant for this particular bond. But we need a bond and we don't have it in this section. So our legal department has suggested that we have a bond section and move everything there, so. Trying to pull that all together. And so that's what this whole section is about. Performance bonds and surety bonds together and criteria for them. Um, gonna zoom through most of that, so a lot of pages. Oops, it looks like I missed a spacing here. Let me make sure. Okay, yeah, that's related to a bond there for the DRB. So I should have a spacing in here for excavations. Nope, that's a bond for excavating. Okay, just need to clarify that then. The next new section is inspections and notification requirements. Uh, this is for Public Works and so. I know that our Public Works Director has made some modifications to what they want this text to look like. But right now we don't have anywhere in code when they're developing something. For the city to do required inspections that are clear and concise. So we're adding that and as you can read there, it's related to construction, but, um. For subdivisions and work performed in the city right of way. So any work performed in the right of way or for subdivisions would go through this inspection process. We also currently don't have any requirements for traffic impact analysis. So this would be a new section for Public Works. Uh, right now we rely on WashDOT's. TIA is what it's called, traffic impact analysis requirements, and they're pretty general. Uh, it works okay, but it's not, uh, specific to Leavenworth, so Public Works is requesting to add that code.
And they wrote it?
Yeah, they provided that one. I, I wouldn't be surprised if he changes it a little bit. Um. I may want to add some more from Public Works. I would love to address some of the conditional use permit general criteria, but I don't know that I can. We can work through that quickly enough. Uh, and then we have some balloon sales happening downtown that are causing all kinds of chaos. So I just wrote in here something about that, just as a placeholder. I don't know that we'll have, get you anything in time for that. Um, so. As you can see, it's not a ton of stuff just yet. Uh, but we're on page twenty-five of forty-seven. The flood regulations take up the bulk of this, um, and I'm not gonna walk through those at this meeting. Uh. I can, if you'd like, we can go back, but I did try to put Department of Ecology notes. Uh, where they said that had to make a change based on their review of our regulations. And sometimes it was just recommended, but I thought it sounded like that made sense to have as a recommended code, so I added it. I did not add all of their recommendations, so if you'd like to do a comparison or dig in on any of that. Um, you can, I have the, their draft code available. Um.
Would I need to request that from you or is that on the website?
No, you have to request that from me. Yeah, it's not, not hard, but. Okay, and then we have expiration of a permit. This is a new section. Uh, excuse me, a clarification of existing building code requirement and it now. We added something similar to this language to our rate and fee schedule. For transparency, we are always trying to move anytime we find them. Anything related to fees into our rate and fee schedule and remove it from code. Um, because we want a single source for all fees and. Fines or penalties or refund processes. So that's all that we've done in the past, but when we did the update with rate and fee, we didn't amend the code section, so. Removing this section will bring us into consistency with our already modified rate and fee. And then twelve. Twelve twenty-eight is our cemetery code. Um, we have ex- very expensive. Damage to the cemetery. When we do services in the winter months, it's the easiest time. For accidents to occur and headstones to get. Uh, damaged. So I think last year there was a headstone that was damaged that might have been upwards of ten thousand dollars to replace. W- we want to minimize that, um, so. Public Works needs to have more discretion and make the public more aware of the challenges. And our inability to have services in the middle of winter. So this change is necessary for um, Public Works. Like I said, there'll be a few more from Public Works and. This section of code isn't typically reviewed by the planning commission, but because I'm doing a bunch of amendments. It makes. We hope it makes sense just to run it through the public or uh, planning commission. And then do the adoption with the city council. Our goal is to get some public comment back if, if there is any. And make the process with the city council a little smoother. So this last two pages is just the cemetery regulations. Um, okay, so it looks like a lot, but it's maybe not as heavy as you think. Um, the next round will have a few more added, but again, I'll break them up into groups. And then we'll review them in more detail in February, hopefully with a hearing in March.
So just to clarify, Willa, so we will review all these code amendments and then we have to hold the public hearing and then. Send it to city council approval. Is that correct?
Yeah, with your recommendation. We'll be seeking your recommendation on all of them. Uh, I think twelve might just be one of the chapters that doesn't necessarily apply. To the planning commission, but. Uh, the rest are definitely in the zoning and development regulation. Environmental protection, those, those sections all come through the planning commission. I thought that was going to take longer, so. But.
Had a question. I just had a question about, I saw something about tiny homes in there. Are tiny homes allowed in Leavenworth and, or what, 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 what was the reasoning for?
We already allow, yeah, we already allow tiny homes in Leavenworth. Um, I've just changed the, um. It, it currently reads tiny home dwelling and I wanted it to read dwelling, tiny home. So that it fits with all the other dwelling units we have.
So, so where's that at?
Housing and dwelling units are defined in Title twenty-one ninety. And so when you look it up and you see dwelling, you'll see the cottage house, you'll see tiny home, you'll see a duplex. Uh, you'll see single family. All the dwelling types that we currently regulate. Um, but tiny homes was kind of written backwards, so it was in the alphabet, it was down by T instead of up by D. So I just moved it around.
So, so i- in, is there language in the code that deals with like, uh, the sewage and all that kind of stuff for tiny homes? Or work at, and hookups for electrical and all that?
Yes. Well, what happens, Linda, is that tiny homes are required to be on a permanent foundation. And as soon as you put them on a permanent foundation, you also have to have a city water hookup. And that's really been the main. Deterrent for placing tiny homes in Leavenworth.
Well, otherwise it, they'd be pretty transient, but, no, okay, great.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep, and we're trying to avoid people living in RVs or mobile dwellings.
Right, that makes sense to me. Thank you.
Yeah. Good eye, by the way, Linda. Nice catch. Okay. So yes, that went a lot faster than I anticipated, but I'm glad and. I would encourage you to kind of dig in where you find interest on those code clarifications. And then for any of you. In attendance or listening tonight, if there are sections of code that you feel are inconsistent. Or don't read well, well, or don't make sense, just shoot me a quick email. If I can put them in our next packet and get them to hearing, uh, I'd like to do that. I do need to get them off to Department of Commerce for a sixty day review, so if you could plan on getting me any of your suggestions. By the, before the end of the month, that would be great.
Yeah, I think maybe it's not for next month, but I think I'd like to see the cluster housing code since it was brought up tonight. Uh, just to see if there is not a pathway. To making some of these projects happen.
So, so next month we'll have the updated but cottage housing. And then we'll have the updated code amendments. Is that what you were asking, Drew?
Uh, I'd like to take a look and get into the cluster housing and know it's not on our docket, but.
Right, that's why I'm not.
Then see if we can, yeah, do we include, see if we can include it just with like minor code amendments?
Yeah, cause if it's, if it's just a one sentence fix.
Right, that's. And it's just like, oh, if we can suggest these couple things.
Just if you attach it to the packet, so we can look at it independently.
I, okay, so you're talking about the cluster subdivision code.
Right.
Which is, I mean, it's a whole. It's a whole section, but we can, I mean, we can look through if there's anything. Did we decide on the docket? Was that done last meeting?
No, no, she's going to send it out between now and the next meeting and then keep an eye on it now.
Yeah.
And then you need to, she'll tell you about putting numbers and reading what you would like.
Okay, okay, okay.
And let me talk about it.
Right.
And is, is that at all related to the twenty-third meeting that is with?
That's what.
That's, that's, okay, gotcha. That I was.
Yeah, I was that all this time.
Um, yeah, so maybe just a good point for us to review our, our kind of next steps here, so. Um, in February we'll meet to review our, kind of hopefully the last draft of the cottage housing. And then. Uh, essentially take, you know, and, and the comment discussion internally and then open it up for public hearing in March. Uh, within the next couple of weeks, we'll all receive the docket assessment for next year. Or submit it independently in the review in the joint meeting on the January twenty-third. And then from there, then we'll start planning our priorities for twenty-twenty-four after that twenty-third meeting direction.
Yes, and in February I'll also give you an updated code consistencies. Handout with the hope that we can review those at a hearing or multiple hearings on, in March as well.
Okay, correct, so. And then, and the goal is to do that, kind of break those up into multiple. Chunks or trying to do the solid ones?
We will break some of it up into chunks, but I'd like to do multiple hearings. So like, for example, the flood regulations in the public works. And then the city zoning essentially. Would each be three different hearings and three different staff reports. And the reason for that is they cover substantially different stuff. Um, and when they go to adoption at the city council level, they may be even more different ordinances. Um, so I'll work with the city attorney to determine how many ordinances he wants. Historically, he wants an o- ordinance for every, you know, section that's changed. Uh, or chapter that's changed. And he's willing to make changes to multiple sections or chapters if it's all related topics. So. That means we might have. If we can get it resolved soon enough, we'll, we'll try and tie those ordinances to each hearing. So depending on how legal tells us to lay it out, you might have one hearing, three hearings. Or, you know, five or six hearings, uh, how, depending on how they're broken out.
So twenty-twenty-four can have a lot, almost every month we'll have a public hearing.
Yeah.
No, we'll have, we'll have all of those in March.
Okay, though.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah.
Understood.
Maybe you can have my time. So, Lilah, the joint council meeting is staying on our agenda that's at seven. Don't they start earlier?
No, that was, that was something I had to get clarified on too. Um, they now do the study session at. Five thirty and they'll have a study session with a meal provided. Uh, and then they open up the city council by seven.
Perfect, thanks.
So come early if you want to eat and hang out for the study session. But even if, uh, there's usually leftovers, so even if you come at a quarter to seven, you may be able to grab a snack. Or, or have a meal, depending on what was served and how much is left.
Great.
Okay.
Any other comments from the committee? I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I, uh. I move to adjourn these.
All right, Amy, if you can make sure we have everybody's name for the next round of minutes, that would be most helpful to me. And thank you all.
Thanks, Lilah.
Are you? Yes.